We do, but we did exempt one of our schools at their request. They were a high-performing charter and said, "This is an activity that is cumbersome. It does nothing to improve our school, and we would rather submit to you a series of academic goals." And I did approve that request. And I was tempted to do it for a number of schools within our system.
Yeah, maybe we need to look at, why don't we if we have high-performing schools? But if we can, is it by law we can exempt them because they're high-performing?
That's what I was...
Well, it's actually in their contract and included in statute. When I received the letter, I have to tell you, the first thing I did was I took it to Natalie and said, "Do I have this authority?" And then she checked with Art and said, "You in fact do." And the next question was, "Well, does that authority extend to other schools and circumstances?" But the letter made sense. I just didn't know if I had the authority to approve the request. And was quite honestly was surprised that I did because almost everything included in the school improvement plan is statute-driven.
Could you exempt...
Well, I don't want to give an answer to that because I'm not sure.
I think for the purpose of going through this, that we might want to, you know, I think we probably want to look at a comprehensive and strategic plan and look at some of these things, but I don't think in the, I mean, right now, it's how the policy is written. But I think we can talk about, and maybe put it on a workshop agenda, to talk about the strategic plans and the improvement plans from the schools.
Excuse me, Shirley, we talked about that before you and Eric got here, that we have to develop a strategic plan.
Okay. Well, you were watching school improvement plans, and I would like to put that on there, too, so we can get past this and get the policies done, because there's quite a bit left to go.
So, just for clarification, it says, "A school board, in accordance with state law, will operate the school district of Sarasota County in accordance with a long-range comprehensive plan." We keep that. It breaks down. It's just the question on, is it being reviewed annually?
That was just my question as I was reviewing.
Well, that's my point. If it's going to be in here, we need to follow it, and is it make sense? And so, that is where I'd need clarification as to, do we continue to have it in annually? Any thoughts? By required, should say "may" instead of "shall"?
That gives you more flexibility.
I don't know if I like that, but...
Well...
I mean, that's why I don't, this is not, this is beyond, I mean, this is likely beyond any individual of us sitting here.
But part of it is, yeah, we probably should be looking at it every year, but...
I am fine with it being done annually. I don't mind the idea of, if you can add language in there where, in the event, there is, well, that's more school improvement plan.
I think we look at this later on, as the superintendent mentioned. Perhaps there are schools that don't need to do this, but I think we leave the plan as it is now, because that's the way it's interpreted today, but, you know, in the future, we may not.
Well, and this particular policy is talking about your, the board's, plan, and not anything to do with the individual schools.
Right, and, okay, and thank you for that clarification, which is kind of where I said the board annual retreat, but, because it's more the board looking forward as to what the strategic plans are.
Yeah, and we're not recommending that we take it out. It was just put in there to make discussions and slow things down. Thank you very much.
So, we shall continue to review annually.
2.26.
Oh, there we go again.
And the first paragraph, the college is not enlisted in there, STC is not listed in there.
In, where...
Under school, self-contained educational alternative center, satellite center, and charter schools, where is the college? Or should it be in there?
Well, this is schools within a school, so...
Well, it's defining what, it's including things within schools. But under one, "The system shall include but not be limited to the following: school improvement plans which are adopted for each district K-12 school and a strategic plan for the technical college."
Right.
So, that was added in there.
There was a period of time in which the technical college attempted to use the school improvement plan template, and we sought specific dispensation to do a strategic plan, because it was, as they say, the square peg round hole.
The only question I have is, so, on the first paragraph, we have second line, "Maintaining a system of school improvement and education accountability, et cetera, et cetera." Moving down, it says, "The system shall establish the individual school as the unit." And I have, I had marked in other areas where we use "system," where I think it may be appropriate to use "district." But I don't know if that changes the definition, system versus district.
Well, the second line, if you put "district" in, maintaining a...
I would keep "system" there. No, 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 I would keep "system" there, keep "system" there.
And then you're referring to it again as the "system," because you're referring back up to what you said in the first sentence, right?
Yeah, it's a minor tweak. I just, the "district shall include," but, no, the "system," that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, what...
Nope.
A system of school improvement. The "system of school improvement shall establish the individual school as the unit." So, it's not the "district shall establish," the "system" means the...
System.
System of school improvement.
Okay.
Or maybe we could...
No, that's fine, Shirley.
I'm fine with that.
Repeat it.
The phrase, "Maintain a system of school improvement," comes straight out of the statute.
Okay.
Very good. And then on page two, go ahead.
Wait, on one, that, just before, A, the plan, the approved plan shall be implemented upon approval by the school board. I mean, do they all come before the school board for actual, we vote on them for approval?
Yeah.
Okay. All of them.
Yep, and that was kind of going back to what we were talking about before, correct?
And if, and if we allow them to not have this plan or something else, I mean, do we then have to change? This is where we might need to make that change, so we'll come back to that.
Well, this very clearly says, "Each district school shall," so I don't believe I have the ability to waive the requirement for a district school. I waive the requirement for a charter school, which is clearly different than a district school.
Well, that answers the question.
Yes.
But I think that we ought to look to make sure, I mean, if it's just our policy that does it, but let's look at the statutes.
It's legally required, so, that's it might, is it legally required?
May I exempt a district school from this?
I'm not, off the top of my head, aware of your ability to do that.
Okay.
But I can certainly look into that question.
But we have that, high-performing schools, and I would just like to know, on the high-performing schools, if we can.
So, that's a legal check.
High performing is a designation for charter schools.
What are the, the schools that we have, the 21 or 25 schools?
Schools of excellence.
Schools of excellence, and they can do a lot of things on their own, correct?
Those are high performing.
Those are high performing.
Certainly are, but the term, I just want to make sure we're using a common vocabulary.
But if it can be, if there's a language, then, if it's compliant with law, then giving the authority...
Yeah, I think we ought to look at that and see if the schools of excellence are high performing, and let's just, instead of naming them, refer them to, under Florida law, that you're allowed...
We spent significant time under the schools of excellence legislation. There is no exemption for school improvement plan under the schools of excellence. I can tell you that.
Okay. Well, maybe we ought to change that. Maybe we ought to change that law. We could put that, perhaps.
Say that about a lot, but that might be first on the list.
Help you do our legislative platform here while we go through our policy. So, then, everything on page two is, is this statutorily change or this procedure? I know that I had a couple circles, but, or was it, do you know?
I believe, I believe that at least some of this is a statutory change, and I think some of it may just be...
Redundant.
...the dispute resolution process. I don't recall that being required by the statute, and perhaps that's why it's being taken out.
Most of this comes from a former board rule that's no longer in effect.
Right.
The language is common.
Okay, I need, okay.
No, no suggested change on this one.
On four, item four, "Should professional development plan be capitals?" The district, is that the name of it? It's the name it has.
Oh, I see your point, on the last, the second part.
Yeah, that is a proper name. We do have a professional development plan. That's the title of a document, so it would be capitalized.
Got it.
I was saying, no.
The amateur development plan is not capitalized.
If it said Sarasota County, professional development plan, I was saying yes.
My, the special committees shall be advisory only with neither, where did the language for this come from? Statute, you know? But is it statute, or is it...
No, I just, I just thought it was important to make clear that you were not delegating authority to the special committees, that, I mean, you were perhaps delegating them authority to come back with recommendations to you, but that ultimately, it's the school board or the superintendent who is...
Make the final decision.
So, people are not misled.
Mm-hmm, okay, fine with, I'm fine with that. Anyone?
2.28. Just tried to clarify so that we're not obliging ourselves to do more than we are legally required to do.
Okay.
Okay, gone. 2.30.
The changes here are fairly, fairly minor.
Trying to read my notes here. Appropriately balanced number of teachers, education, support employees. No, never mind, I'm trying to just read through my notes here. And then, I think you answered this already, the removal of, on B, so, paragraph two, subpair B, what is it, says, "We removed..."
We were...
Why are we striking?
"We removed middle schools from a 'shall be required' to a 'shall not be required, however permitted," because under the statute, it's only high schools where students are required.
Okay, okay. Any other thoughts or questions?
Okay, 2.40.
Sorry, I was reading my notes. No one?
How's your chance?
I'm fine with this. Anyone? Thoughts? Okay, 2.41.
41.
Just before you leave that, you have a note there that you've struck the notes on previous similar policies.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
On 2.40, the note just says, "Requires annual review."
Oh, thank you, yep.
Do you advise the board, the superintendent, but not the district?
No, I'm the lawyer for the board. The district is a geographic entity that doesn't get a lawyer, and I certainly advise the superintendent, but I am not...
You said what it says. Do you advise the superintendent?
Well, I do advise the superintendent.
Well, do we need it? Because that is a structure that's different around the state, and so, that does this, doesn't minimize the ability for...
Different districts do it different ways.
So, but does our language "shall" make it such that it is, the legal counsel is for both the board and the superintendent?
I suppose if you wanted to go to a different model, you could do that. You would just need to, I mean, if, for example, you went to an in-house attorney for the superintendent, like some districts have, I think that's, as long as you're obtaining that attorney from outside your own membership, can hire one of you to be the board's...
Right.
...or the superintendent's lawyer, you could do that.
Okay.
What if it's volunteers?
Okay, I'm fine with that. I just was curious when to clarify. 2.41. Anyone? Come.
2.42.
I don't really have any.
2.50.
Okay. 2.1, anyone? 2.51.
2.51, I know is one we've had some conversation about.
We have 20 minutes before we have to adjourn. Shirley.
Well, I would imagine we've all heard from members of the public, it's some Freedom Fest that's always been there. Both parties, candidates, have been involved in it, and it ends at the field. Is there a way that we could somehow say, "These things are not allowed during school hours"?
But it's more than that, I believe, Shirley. I told them flat out that they could not have any campaigning on...
Is your mic on?
Pardon me?
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That they could not have any campaigning at all on school grounds, because that's what I've always understood. There is no campaign.
Well, our, the policy, as it currently is situated, says, "Political posters shall not be displayed in schools. Political literature shall not be distributed in schools or on school property. Solicitations for votes or contributions shall not be conducted in schools or on school property." And it goes on. Then it, so, that, I think, would prevent what I understand...
Has been taking place.
Has been taking place, apparently, but when I was asked, that's the, I didn't know it was taking place. When I was asked, that's what I pointed out. Now, this, this rule, this policy, also says, "Nothing in this regulation," I suppose, perhaps I should say, "policy," "nothing in this policy shall be applicable to," and then it lists a number of things. If you, if you wanted to make an additional exemption, that's where it would go, I suppose. I don't suggest that you change one through seven as your general policy. The question is, do you want to have an F for another, you know, but you, I think that you would want to make that fairly narrowly tailored, because I think it's frankly been to the board's benefit to have this policy, you know, to say, "We're a politics, largely politics-free zone."
Eric.
I think if somebody's renting the space out, I think that's a little bit different than some of these other things. I think there should be an exemption. If there's a festival, they're renting the space out, and they're renting a booth out to, you know, and as long as they say, you know, Republican jazz, Democrat smell, as long as they allow everybody to do it, and they're renting space, it's outside school hours, it's, you know, maybe Knights Out Sarasota, or maybe Freedom Festival, I don't have a problem with that kind of stuff.
I also think, I mean, don't we, I mean, I mean, weren't there some churches that rented space in schools? I mean, there are other things, and I also, not just rented space, but I'm thinking about the, the clubs at the school. We've got Democratic and Republican clubs at schools, and I don't know what other clubs. I mean, these are after-school activities, and so, are we telling that the Democratic club can't talk about politics?
My understanding was that after-school clubs must be run by students, not an adult.
They have to have an adult sponsor, but, again, I mean, if, if you read this and you're going to be that specific about it, then we're basically telling these kids that have these after-school clubs. So, I mean, I think we need to do something to allow for these after-school clubs, you know, because if it's an after-school club, that they're doing something...
Run by a student.
Well, I believe others would know better, but I believe those kinds of student clubs do exist. And I don't, I don't believe...
And they do operate, not necessarily only, not, it's not after-school hours, sometimes it's during lunch or what have you, so...
Yeah, I would like to do something to exempt school clubs that are authorized by the school, and I'd also like to exempt outside organizations that rent the facility.
No, I would not like to do that. I don't think politics belong in the school system. I just, I just don't. I haven't done it for 20 years. I see, I think it's ridiculous that we allow politicking on our school sites.
Well, this, this festival has been going on for years.
I know it has, and I've told them for years that they can't do it, and then I forget to come back in and get a legal ruling on it, but when they came to me this time, I said, "No, you cannot do this, because it's in our policy that they cannot do this."
Todd.
Well, and I just want to make sure that we're clear here, that when you say rental by third parties, political organizations then and of themselves are third parties. And so, during the last presidential election cycle, the technical college was approached about hosting an event with the vice president. We got well into planning before we realized that it was not being organized as part of the federal government. It was being organized on behalf of a campaign, at which point, the event moved from the technical college to the Robert L. Taylor Center. But this would allow then to enter into a rental agreement with whoever, for president, to then host the event on school campus. And I just want to make sure that you understand what you're allowing, because that would be what our interpretation would be.
I, I remember that there was an event that was hosted at Booker High School. It was the same year that Katrina hit, or maybe it was one year after, that same month. I mean, sometimes, schools are one of the only places, and I, and I don't know whether we say a candidate can't do it, but I at least want to talk about outside groups that have everybody there.
Eric.
I'm sure this is going to cause Shirley to change her mind, but I agree with her, and I'm sure Shirley doesn't remember. Do you remember the first time you and I met? Her and I met at Riverview, and we debated each other during the Obama election, and she took Obama's side, and I took the correct side.
Oh, that can't be...
Yeah, that is the first time you and I met, and we, her and I debated at the Riverview Auditorium with the students there, and we were talking politics, and her and I were debating, and all the kids were sitting there, learning about the different sides of their campaign, and I thought it was, thought it was useful for those, for those kids. And I've gone to Republican club, clubs, and it's about politics, and, you know, I didn't have to campaign, but I've heard that other candidates go there, and, you know, and it's, it's part of a learning environment for them, but I agree, if you have a, I agree when it's the, it's the political party who's, who you're renting from, it's a little more difficult, but if you have the Kiwanis Club, or the Knights Out Sarasota, the Freedom Festival, and they're renting it, or church, for churches renting, you know, space, they may not support Planned Parenthood. They may support, you know, Right to Life. It's highly conceivable that they may take, you know, political stances on things, and so I...
That means the school board would be taking political stance by...
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Jane wanted to say...
I don't, I don't believe that's the case. I think we already have a precedence on that, and I think it's a public service to the community to allow freedom of thought and exchange of ideas.
Jane.
So, I agree with Shirley.
Well, I think that we have to say that it depends, because in an instance where you're going in to educate students, and perhaps you know something about Obama, and you know something about the other side, I think that's different. You're talking to students, and I think that's helpful sometime, but when you have some people coming on campus to actual electioneering, if you will, that is of concern to me. So, I think it's, it's difficult to say, but I understand where you're talking about STC having that event, because that was the campaign that was actually doing that. That was not the federal government, as you said, or the state government. So, we're right in the middle of political season now, and this could, could happen a lot, so I think we have to be very clear and concise in our policy.
So, I agree. I think, a couple things. I don't disagree with Caroline that we, if, it's a slippery slope.
It is.
And I think the biggest part is not including it into instruction or in such, where, that really is where we can run afoul. But there are civic educational opportunities, and I don't know, and I know that, I think you, the clubs are a great point that exist currently. Does this current language, I mean, the reality is, we know that things have been happening, right or wrong, that don't comply with our current policy, does this current policy prohibit partisan school clubs?
No.
Okay, it does not.
Well, it's certainly not been interpreted that way.
That's what I, so...
It hasn't been interpreted that way, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's, when you say you cannot have any partisan politics on school property during this, our school is in session, and if the clubs meet at lunch, we got a problem. And the issue of...
Well, that basically says employees.
The issue of, where we were speaking to, and it, and it wasn't a class, it was a large group. I think that was covered under 8(c), "Discussion and study of political science and theory, current events, or presentations and debates of political issues as part of the established curriculum." I mean, so there was a curriculum that we were there for, but I think, you know, it's also a slippery slope if we say, "Nobody can come in." Well, then, what about when, you know, a legislator wants to give an update or come to a school to answer questions about some things that happened, you know, whether they're for the school or for the community? I mean, I, I think we've got facilities that we should make available to the public, and some people say, you know, even just telling them this, that, you know, that they can't wear a sign or a shirt, or something like that, some would say that that stops their, their First Amendment rights. But when we're talking about a parade or part of an organization that comes in on a weekend, when the students aren't there and it's not presented for the students, I mean, because what we're trying to do is not indoctrinate students, not allow a teacher, because, I mean, I've been in classes where I've seen the teacher with pictures on the wall, and I'm like, "Mm, do you really want that?" Some of these things I have concerns about, but I do believe that we need to come up with a policy that would allow that. And I know that, I mean, I don't, you know, I think we need to allow, and we need to be accommodating to the public, just like we're trying to work with the county on the parks. We've got a facility that the taxpayers pay for, and, you know, we shouldn't ban their use for, for public purpose.
So, I think, a couple things. We have, this, I think, there's a lot to this particular one, and I don't think we're going to accomplish it in eight minutes. I think there's a lot of legal elements that we need clarity on, because it is a slippery slope, but I also agree, if we can do it, if there's language that can be included by way of a lease where we're held harmless, but there are also, I know we talked about that, there are elements that we can say, specific exclusions on those activities, and there's reasons for that, such as drinking alcohol, et cetera. So, I would say, I would propose we stop here. I do know specifically, and I don't want to write a policy around one specific event, but as that event is a current event, my understanding is that rules can be waived, because it's unlikely we would adopt, well, I don't know what our timeline is, we still have a lot of chapter two to go through, that, as it relates to that one, that's, am I correct, that rules could be waived to allow...
The board could certainly vote to waive its rule in a specific...
In...
In a specific instance.
Request.
What I would certainly, and I, I don't know all the details of this, but it's my understanding, this is a civic group, nonpartisan, you know, what you don't want to do is waive for one, on one side of an issue, and not waive for another, on another side of the issue, but...
No, it's both, it's both.
Right, so, but for the policy purposes, I think there's a lot of stuff that we need clarity on, but just to, because I know all of us have been, members of the community have reached out, rightfully so, from all different ends.
policy, it would be August. And I'm not sure how relevant that is, because you're right in the middle of political season, and by the time you advertised it and did everything, primaries would be over. So if you're seeking to make a change to this, I would suggest that we do as we've done other policies, and pull them out of order, and workshop it when we return on the 15th--
I agree.
--so that we can get it on the agenda and get it changed permanently, so that we have some guidelines. But before we do that, I mean, I'm happy to sit with Art and craft the language. I'm still not sure that I know what the intent would be when Art sat down and said, "How do we make it say this?" Am I hearing you correctly, that the board would like for us to explore language that allows school facilities to be used under rental agreements outside of school hours, and we would call those non-school functions, and that they could be political in nature? Is that the type of language you're looking for?
No, I would rather say that it would exempt, when you're saying, "Nothing in this regulation shall be applicable to," and I would say, I don't think we have to say "political in nature." We just have to say--
That should be, because that's what it is.
I need very specific guidance. If you would allow a third party to rent the gymnasium at one of our high schools for a political rally outside of school hours, that's the guidance I need.
And I'm not sure whether we want, I think maybe have two, one that would include political and one that would include, well--
The current one that we're discussing that's really raised this concern is a, as I understand it, a nonpartisan civic group. And that seems to me to be one category of thing, as opposed to, you know, Art Hardy running for whatever wants to rent out the gym for a rally. There are other issues that could come around that second, second hypothetical, because I believe, and I'll, I know I've looked at this before, but I want to re-educate myself. I know there are, having nothing to do with the education code, election law, issues related to things like soliciting or receiving contributions in the government.
Unless they rent the building.
There's a lease provision in there.
So, but I mean, that's another, that's another issue.
That's the law. You're right. No, that's the law. That's the benchmark. But then, it's what we want to adopt as the board. That's kind of where--
You can rent a building, so therefore you can--
I'm not opining, but I understand.
You can rent the building. If you rent the building, then you can solicit contributions.
The way the law reads--
Correct. The way the law reads now, that is correct.
Not saying, that's just the Florida statute. Again, Eric, and then--
Not that I know campaign law. But I'm not, what I was saying was rallies. What I was saying had to do with the nonpartisan. If you have the chamber, whatever, and they're doing a business expo, and they have, you know, Hardy's Aluminum, and Robinson Concrete, and then they have the Democratic Party, and then they have Maricopa Cross, that's the kind of thing that I'm talking about. I'm not talking about people doing rallies. I'm just talking more of the Kiwanis Club doing something, the Freedom Festival, where it's a subpart. And those people aren't soliciting funds, they're disseminating information. So that, I'm not saying the rally kind of thing, but obviously, if someone wanted to do something for the thing we're talking about, Northport, they'd have to make a motion tonight to suspend the rule.
And we may need to continue the topic at the dais, just given our time--
It's being proposed.
--if you need more additional direction.
No, no, I said what you're proposing is not what's being proposed.
Okay, hold on. Excuse me, one second.
Then--
There's clearly a lot more to discuss. This particular, specific policy section, I believe, needs to be worked shopped. And if we need to give you further clarity as to what that draft would look like, we'll have to continue the conversation at the board meeting.
Well, I think we could even have the, I think maybe two, because you could add F and, we want to do the clubs, some of us might want to do the civic groups, and maybe even less of us want to do the political. And I don't know, do we even need to have the political one if they rent it or not? I mean, I, you know, I think we're looking at the civic one, you know, and--
Well, if that's the decision tree, certainly we can come up with--
Options.
F, G, and H, and then you can say, "I'm good with two and not the other." So if those are the three parameters that you'd like, clubs, civic groups, and then political organizations, we can write language, and you can vote them up or down.
Starting point.
Yep.
I think there's a lot I need clarity on, but the civic groups and then defining what that is. But for now, this concludes our first policy review. We got one chapter done. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work.
Is there any, I think we're coming back in June to--
We are coming--
Do this again?
June 5 will be our follow-up continuum for Chapter Two, pulling out this--
Excuse me, I thought we just said that neither, neither, Todd nor I will be there June 5.
Yeah.
So--
We're talking about the 15th.
Which one is a workshop?
I'm sorry, I raised the question about what are we going to be discussing at the June, which policies, which chapters or chapter are we going to be discussing--
I do not believe--
June 5.
I have a discussion on Monday with Chapter Four.
I do not believe we have specified chapters outlined yet.
Okay. Well, but that would be Shirley, number three, and she's not going to be here.
Right, so that will--
Prime numbers are out.
So for--
All right. On Thursday, I have a meeting with the assistant superintendents. I will figure out which ones will be ready.
And I'll make sure--
We know it will be two, kind of based on our experience. I'm getting an eight from the outfield, so maybe eight.
I have eight.
And is it done and ready to go?
No.
Okay, so to be--
No, yes.
Yes.
So the item, the specific chapters will be noticed.
Well, in advance.
So, we are adjourned.
Well, five and seven, what happened with them?
We are adjourned.
We're not done with them.
Just that, I'm ahead.